And welcome to this special called meeting of the Hickory City Council for a presentation of the pedestrian and bicycle plan. At this time, I'm going to call upon John Marshall and he'll kick us off.
I appreciate y'all coming in a little early to hear this presentation to consider the bicycle pedestrian plan. Went back and looked and you guys actually approved the contract for this plan exactly one year ago. It was, well, not exactly, it was two days off. So we started this process, I guess, last fall and went back and we hired or started negotiating or talking with Alta back in last November, I believe. And so we had our first kickoff meeting in January of this year before everything kind of went south. And I would like to also recognize a couple people that are here. We have Lindsey Stockman, she's from Livwell Catawba in the County Health Department. I'd like to thank them again. They're the ones that, she's on the line over there. I'm pointing over there like she's sitting over there.
Oh, hi.
She's on the computer, she's listening in. But I wanted to mention her because if you'll remember to get this plan started, Livwell Catawba gave us $25,000 to prime the plan to get it started. So I'd like to recognize her. And we have some people that served on the committee here. Karen, we've got Aaron Coors here with Greenway. Everybody knows Aaron. And Steve, is there anybody else in here that served on the committee? I think that's it. But we had, we-
John, let me, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you for just to say, is this being livestreamed?
Kevin.
I know, I wanted to just make the announcement also, Councilwoman Jill Patton is unable to be here tonight.
She's online as well, yes.
She's here with us and on the computer. I didn't know if it's being livestreamed or not.
I don't know if it's being livestreamed like on Facebook, but it is, it is on the Teams. So we have people that have called in, but it's not going out live.
Okay, I just wanted to, I'm sorry, I should have made that clear at the beginning, but I didn't, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Jill's over there on the computer too.
Okay. Hello Jill.
Hey Jill.
Where's Jill?
Hi, everybody.
She's over there.
She's a little person over there.
Okay, hi Jill. Stand up Jill.
Sorry, John, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. But I would like to introduce two, I guess, developers of this plan, both with Alta planning and design. Here in person tonight, we have John, Mr. John Cox, and online, we have Heather Siegel. And I'm going to turn it over to John to speak a little bit and then he'll turn it over to Heather to make the presentation.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
John, will the presentation slides be up here?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, we're glad to be here with you this evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
My first presentation with a mask on. Well, it's great to be here with you and, and great to see implementation already starting out on the road. You all have got a lot of great projects underway. And want to commend you all for this project that also had funding from Livwell Catawba as well as the city. We don't see many projects that have that kind of cooperation, so. As John said, and if you'll go to the next slide, I don't know, Heather, are you controlling the slides? Yeah, we started this last, at the beginning of 2020 effectively. And we were lucky enough to be able to have our first steering committee and our first public, public meeting in person, back when we could do in-person meetings. The mayor came to our, our meeting at the Ridgeview Center there. We did surveys and, and public outreach and, and were able to do a lot of things in person at the beginning of the process. And so luckily, we got that in before the pandemic hit. We've been meeting with the committee and staff virtually since then, but we also did meet with the, John, the Bello Club.
Yeah, Friends of Hickory.
Friends of Hickory as, as part of our early work. So what we're going to present to you tonight is, is the results of the planning process and what we heard from the public. And so we're at the end of the process and hopefully what you'll, well, not hopefully, but you will have a plan here that you can use with DOT to ensure that you all get their participation in funding some of these projects going forward on NC DOT roadways. So Heather, you can go to the next slide. Which is going to show you, so, so big, big themes in terms of vision, connectivity, equity and access for all, increasing safety, increasing health and livability. Again, Livwell Catawba was a partner in this. Supporting active and accessible new development. And then making sure that the Hickory Urban Bike Loop is, is part of the priority. You can go to the next slide, Heather. So again, we had great public participation, both in person and in public meetings as well as online. We had a map where we got input from people. And, and so I'll show you on the next slide, some of the, some of the results of those surveys. A little over half of the people in, or the respondents said they were comfortable walking in Hickory, but about that same number of people said they were not comfortable bicycling in Hickory. But that still leaves lots of people, even on the walking side, who would like things to be better. Heather, you can go to the next slide. And then when we ask about their top priorities for types of investments, the kinds of things you guys are doing now, you all are doing now, bike facilities, paved paths and greenways was the number one thing, followed by sidewalks and safer crossings. In terms of destinations, people want to get to shopping, but they also want to get to your parks and, and to, to their other neighborhoods in town as term, in terms of top destinations. Just to give you a sense of the kinds of, of things that people told us. From here, and Heather, you can go to the next slide, we want to give, give you an idea of, an overview of the recommendations. And I'm going to turn it over to my, my colleague Heather Siegel, who's with us virtually, and she'll walk us through these next slides.
Hi y'all, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes.
My name's Heather Siegel. I worked with Alta Planning as John just mentioned. And building off of our public input in the early part of the project, we developed network recommendations for pedestrian and bicycle facilities, starting by looking at the existing sidewalk network and the multi-use paths and bikeways that you have in town. We examined the roadways, the gaps. We took the public input on key destinations and key corridors that people wanted to travel on and built off of the existing sidewalk network to develop a, excuse me, there's a little delay, the pedestrian network recommendation that in yellow, in the thin yellow lines, we identified key sidewalk gaps that can be built up for time, as well as multi-use paths marked in the dark green along some busier corridors. And in developing the different facilities in this network recommendations, we were looking at the street context, the speed limit, the right of way, whether or not there were already existing facilities, including sidewalks or bike lanes, and trying to make the most contextually relevant facility recommendation throughout the city. In addition to the pedestrian network map in the report, you'll also find a bike network recommendation map that again builds off the existing facilities. I don't know that you can see my cursor on the screen, but there's some short segments of bike, of existing bike lanes on Fifth Street or East. And you've got quite a number of multi-use path projects underway that are in the light green. And then we built off of that, again, looking at the street context throughout the city, speed limits, right of way, curb presence, and try to make a contextually appropriate bike facility recommendation throughout the city. So whereas in the pedestrian network, you have sidewalks and multi-use paths, those multi-use paths also serve as bike facilities. And then we've also recommended bike lanes, standard bike lanes on certain streets, advisory shoulders, buffered or separated bike lanes in dark blue, more on your city downtown, city center streets in more urban context. There's recommendations for paved shoulders in more like rural stretches of and outskirts of the city. And then we made recommendations for short bicycle and pedestrian connectors, connecting some small dead end streets and cul-de-sacs that, to kind of enhance the existing network of bike recommendations. There are descriptions of all these facility types in the report, which we've shared with you. And then we also spent some time really honing in on the Hickory Urban Bike Loop, which is a concept developed by the Friends of Hickory group and the Bicycle Advocacy Advisory Committee within that group. So this loop has been identified by that group as kind of the main corridors that bicyclists like to travel on, that get them to all four corners of the city. And what we did was then recommend the best facility type for creating dedicated bike facilities all around that loop and connecting the whole city. The next slide highlights some upcoming NC DOT projects, Department of Transportation. And these corridors highlighted in purple are corridors that are on, already on the calendar for projects and improvements in the coming years. And given the NC DOT's new complete streets policy where they will fund the complete streets facilities, including bikeways and pedestrian facilities, this plan has identified the appropriate bicycle and pedestrian facilities on these streets. So when these projects are completed by NC DOT, these are the facilities that they will implement on those corridors. And I know John Marshall, I think you wanted to take a minute to give us some more details on some of these projects.
Yeah, I just want to go over some of these projects and how important this plan is moving these DOT projects forward with the city. As everybody knows, 321 is going to be widened. We're going to take over the northbound bridge here, you know, we're building that trail from the bridge all the way up to MDI. We're doing that in conjunction with DOT. Also, 127 going into Alexander County, we're going to have a multi-use trail going over the new bridge that they build over the Catawba River. So we're going to have two multi-use trails crossing the Catawba River in the future. It's kind of off the map, but 127 in Mountain View, we're also planning a multi-use path along that when they widen it. Also, Star Town Road, when we get to that point, we're looking at trying to connect all the development that's going to happen along Star Town Road with some kind of trail system. 29th McDonald Parkway, we'll have some type of bicycle and pedestrian facilities on that as well. And then Springs Road and 127 are a little further out, but we'll also consider that at time as well. So as Heather said, once the complete streets policy was adopted by DOT, there's always been a cost share if we put in sidewalk or if we put in multi-use trail or bike lanes with DOT. With them adopting the complete streets, if we have this in a plan, which is critical for the, you know, to adopt this plan, they will participate on these amenities 100%. So that's, that's a big change in DOT's philosophy. So that makes this even more important.
John, how did the delays from DOT affect any of this?
Well, all projects have been pushed back slightly, but as the, as the economic situation with DOT gets better, projects will integrate, will move back up eventually. We just don't know at this time. But it, I mean, the situation looked pretty bleak when they pushed all the projects out several years, but they'll, they'll eventually, you know, move forward. Yes, sir.
That, that plan, that route that you showed us about three slides ago.
The bike loop.
The bike loop.
Yes, sir.
Is that the original one that we went on?
Yes. It's changed slightly just because we're, it changed slightly right here around 17th and Clement, because what we did is we're going to extend 17th up to Clement and that we're going to be able to tie it back in and have a safe crossing right here over 321. So we made, we made a couple little tweaks to it, but it's better than it was.
Basically what we did.
Basically the same.
A year ago.
That's it.
Or two.
Time flies, maybe. 2020 seems like 10 years.
When you're having fun, zippity do dah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John. So building off of these, you know, near-term projects for NC DOT roads, the city, John, Karen, and some others, and the steering committee helped us identify some priority projects along city maintained streets. So these would be projects that the city of Hickory can pursue in addition to those NC DOT corridors. So these, we identified 12 priority projects, four on-street bike projects, four sidewalk projects, and four multi-use projects. And developed some cut sheets and detailed design pages around these priority projects. And I'm going to highlight a few of those, but in the report, the full report, there are detailed cut sheets for each of these projects. So the first one is the scenic lake route, which we developed as a concept for a, for dedicated bike facilities up on the northwest end of the Hickory Bike Loop. And what we've recommended on this highlighted portion of the loop, which includes Sixth Street, 21st Avenue, and then 12th Street Drive, is changing the cross-section just by repainting and resurfacing the road. And rather than having two lanes divided with a double yellow line, there will be a single travel lane in the middle with advisory shoulders on the outside. This is a new type of facility for the United States. It's only been implemented in a handful of cities across the United States. It's more common in Europe. But essentially, it creates a dedicated space out in the shoulder area of the roadway for bicyclists and encourages vehicular traffic to travel down the center lane and only move into the shoulder space when they encounter oncoming vehicles, like you see in the backside of this picture. So this loop, as it currently exists, has, has marked shoulders, but they're, they're bumpy and uneven with the curb and gutter pans on the side. And so they're really not suitable for bike use. And yet this, this whole loop is a very popular area for bicyclists. And the, the traffic volumes on this loop really are very low and would warrant a much lower, quieter kind of street cross-section that could create more space for bicyclists and create a signature area for bicyclists to go access Glen Hilton Memorial Park, JCPark, as well as the river and the new greenways projects that are going in along the riverfront up in that area. Another priority project, and this actually highlights a couple of priority projects.
Just for clarification, is it still going to be a, have two-way traffic?
Yeah.
Yes.
The center lane is only for cars that are, that get into the center lane to pass bikes. It kind of creates bike lanes, two bike lanes, and then the center lanes for traffic that they, you know, move back over when they're not following. I know you're like, what?
How are they going to know?
It's sort of like, it's a, like a one-lane bridge condition.
Okay.
So if somebody is on the bridge, you, you merge over. But if there's no cyclists there, then two cars, they just, they use the full road space and they pass each other. This only works if there's low enough traffic volumes and good sight distance, and so you wouldn't do it on the tight curves, for example. So it's, it's a way to create some space without having to widen that very challenging road.
There would have to be a tremendous amount of education, I would think, related to this.
It is a concept. It's a, it's something to look at, it's something to consider. I mean, Steve Miller loved it, he's going out there and playing it next week, but.
That's the idea. Great. If we did that on all roads, we'd-
Yes, you couldn't do it on all, you'd get in big trouble.
No, that's, that would definitely take some education. But it is a concept that you can consider when some of the narrow roads were part of the line.
That almost seems like it would work better than the yellow line, I don't know.
It would work better than-
I mean, from my thinking.
It would work better with the yellow, double yellow.
I would think so, but I don't know.
Well, so this, I think we, we started with the most challenging one. The ones after this are going to be less, less. Hey, just keep an open mind.
All right. Sorry. And forgive me, I can't catch all the voices on the phone, so forgive me, I missed a little bit of that. The next project is 17th Street Northwest and 17th Street Extension. So the straight section up here is 17th Street, and then there's a new section that's been proposed to connect Ninth Avenue up to Clement Boulevard. And on this stretch of roadway and-
Heather, your slide didn't change.
Oh, it didn't? What are you looking at? The, so the advisory shoulder one?
You have a bad eye, there it is.
You're there now.
Weird.
You have to be there.
It must be delayed, sorry about that. Okay, so starting over, 17th Street from First Avenue all the way north to Ninth Avenue Northwest, we're proposing widening and adding, adding bike lanes as well as sidewalks. And then the city has already proposed a, an extension of 17th Street from Ninth Avenue up to Clement Boulevard with a similar cross-section of bike lanes and sidewalks. And these will help create a continuous bicycle facility on the west side of the Hickory Urban Loop, starting with the existing bike lanes down in the south end of 17th Street, all the way up to Clement Boulevard. I think my next slide should be Clement Boulevard. Can you guys see this, has the screen changed?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So the current cross-section of Clement Boulevard includes two travel lanes in both directions and a center turn lane for a width of 16 feet. And if the center lane were removed and the street were restripped, you could fit some nice bike lanes on Clement Boulevard to create a better connection between, I'm just going to scroll back, between 17th Street out to Winkle Park and the Hickory Cricket Stadium. So we, we also looked at the, the traffic counts on this section of Clement, and I'm sorry, it don't remember with me on the top of my head, but they were sufficiently low that we think a, a lane reduction out here and adding bike lanes would be a good solution to create a more complete street that accommodates bicyclists and pedestrians. The next project that we're highlighting is 17th Avenue Northeast. And this was a priority sidewalk section in order to create better connectivity to City Tan Park, and also complete some of the Hickory Urban Loop up in that area. And switching to the opposite side of the city, the southwest corner along the urban loop, is the Third Avenue, 15th Street, and Seventh Avenue sidewalk project. So this group of sidewalks was kind of clustered together as a single project to create more sidewalk connectivity in that southwest corner of the city. And within this project, we are also including, this red dot on the map represents a crossing improvement at the intersection of Seventh Avenue and 13th Street. So currently, there is a, a single crosswalk, I think there, with two just white stripes. We are recommending high-visibility crosswalks be painted and a rectangular rapid flashing beacon be, be installed on the south leg of 13th Street to help people cross this wide roadway, which is four lanes wide. Ultimately, 13th Street will become a dead end, I understand, when the 321 project is completed, which should help lower traffic volumes and help people cross in this area. And in addition, our bicycle network recommendations call for this very wide outside lane on 13th Street. I think it's something like 18 feet wide, that outside lane, which is plenty of room for travel lane and bicycle lanes. So this project and, and the bikeway projects will really kind of transform the bicycle and pedestrian connectivity in that southwest corner of the city. And then we have the 12th Avenue Multi-Use Path Project. And this creates a great connection between Sixth Street and, and 321, and kind of cuts off the bottom half of that scenic lake loop that we highlighted a few slides back. And this corridor is a key connection for bicyclists and pedestrians, but it does not have any sidewalks or bike lanes on it as it is. And so we had, I, I think the city had identified this corridor for a sidewalk project in their, in their sidewalk kind of inventory that was completed prior to this project. But we recommend kind of updating that recommendation to a 10-foot side path so we can provide bicycle, a bicycle facility as well along this corridor. Because the current right of way is, is narrow enough that you would have to repave and widen the road if you wanted bike lanes, whereas a multi-use path can kind of get the bicycle and pedestrian facilities with, with one, within one project. The plan also includes program recommendations to round out the, these infrastructure-based recommendations. And we included some questions in our public input survey and our open house to get feedback from residents on what types of programs that they would like to see and build off of those initial suggestions. So some of the priority program recommendations are to establish a bicycle and pedestrian coordinator staff position within the Hickory, city of Hickory staff, to, to start the process of becoming a recognized bike and walk-friendly community. Create some wayfinding signage and some special signage around the hub loop to help people identify safe streets for walking and biking and how to get from point A to B. We've shown some examples of some concepts that we've developed for other cities that can show people distances as well as travel times to key destinations around the city. Other program recommendations include education programs for motorists, bicyclists and pedestrians, general safety education, as well as if a project like the advisory shoulders on the standard bike loop were implemented, you would certainly want to implement some education around how to use advisory shoulders both, both as a, a motorist and a cyclist. Other programs that were well-received by the public and also promote biking and walking in the city are Open Street for cyclovia events that have become popular throughout the United States, where streets are shut down to motorists and people get to see how a street or neighborhood could feel with bicyclists and pedestrians being the priority mode of travel. Creating a citywide bike map that could certainly build off of these recommendation maps can be a great tool for people wanting to find the best route through town, walking or biking. And then the plan also includes policy and regulatory updates to update the, the design standards within the city code for sidewalk widths, landscape buffers along the roadways to create a more pedestrian street scape. What else? Other like requirements for building sidewalks and multi-use paths with new development and that type of thing. So the next steps.
Heather, I'll add, for the, for the policy and regulatory-
Heather, I'll add, though, for the policy and regulatory updates, this is something you all can do for free, but it helps to get people who are investing in building in Hickory to help to pay for the infrastructure. So it's, you know, it doesn't cost, you all can change regulations to help get some of that built by folks who would be investing here.
Thanks, John. So we've kind of come to the end of our project. And the next and final steps are to hopefully get this plan drafted by you and finalize and print the report, so you guys will have copies. And we'll share that with NC DOT, so they have these recommendations on their books. We'd like to also schedule a final meeting with John and Karen to kind of talk about next steps for implementing some of these projects. And then you guys, your next steps are to continue pursuing funding and implementation and build off of the great projects that you've already got underway, including this concept bridge that's going to be built over 321. So you guys really have a good momentum going already, and we hope that this plan can help you carry that through. And that's the end of our presentation, but we are certainly here for all questions and comments and any clarifying needs that you have. So thank you for your time.
Hi, this is Jill, just asking to go back to the regulatory updates and policy. Would this be where, who would give us the guidance to give to our plan so that we can incorporate this into our own policies?
Sure. So there's a table in the report that includes your current policies and then some recommendations for how to strengthen those policies or modify them, as well as examples from other key cities throughout North Carolina and the United States, kind of providing like best practices for policy and regulatory code.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from members of council or staff?
I have a question. So presuming we're piggybacking on a lot of our new construction and development.
Right.
That would be the initial kind of timeline.
Correct.
To capture that in the short term. What are some of the other, I guess, in terms of short-term, medium-term, long-term recommendations?
So, short-term, the map that, or, you know, I guess it's near-term and medium-term is the map that John showed of the NC DOT projects. So these are projects that would be either designed and/or funded and implemented. And then I would say, any of the priority projects, the 12 projects that Heather listed, would be great things that can be tackled. They don't really have to be tackled in that order, per se, but they are all, I think, near-term priorities that provide connections to the investments that you are already making. And then I think the city's engineering group, you know, is doing regular sidewalk maintenance. Anytime there is an intersection project or resurfacing that NC DOT is doing, they can begin to implement these recommendations, including, they should be implementing the ADA infrastructure along a route when they do resurfacing. Does that get to your question?
We don't really have a clear timeframe given the current situation.
Part of it depends on the level of resources committed by the state and the city. So I would say, you know, the full recommendation is probably a 30, 40-year build-out. Could be sooner, depending on what you all invest and what the state invests.
Well, I mean, I think we've got a really good start.
Absolutely.
On this plan. And the fact that we can do some things to, for the state to be able to come on board to represent us in funding at 100%.
That's right.
I think that probably should be one of our priorities, is to get that implemented so we can get some help on the future projects as they come on board.
That's right.
Is there any kind of private funding that we could see?
Grants, like grants or something.
Grants.
Well, one of the biggest sources of private funding, I think, that you all will see for this type of project is the folks who are building commercial and residential development in Hickory. And if you can get them to participate in building along their frontages, that will be a very significant way to get pieces of this done. In terms of other private sector funding, we've seen in many cities across the United States, some of the major employers, whether it's your hospital or industry, who also contribute. Heather showed a slide where Walmart in Bentonville, Arkansas sponsored some of their Bike Route signage. And they did that because, for the same reasons that you all are investing, they want to attract residents, they want to retain workers, and they want to, you know, kind of put their money where their mouth is in terms of the investments that they're making locally.
So, the city, every year in your annual budget, you adopt, you include about $200,000 for sidewalk and bike wave plan implementation. This is the, I think, the third generation, you know, we had the sidewalk and bike wave master plan, went back to the, I think, I think the first one was in the late 90s, and then, and then we updated it. So as conditions change, this will need to be updated again. So this isn't going to stand as is for the next 30 years. In addition to the $200,000 that you do for sidewalks annually, that will continue to go into funding. It may be a case where you have to bank two years' worth of money to do a project. If you remember, we're also in anticipation of, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars of NC DOT projects. We had been setting aside additional money. We had hoped to do $100,000 a year over five years to have $500,000 to go in. So we're on year two of that. This coming year will be year three, so if the economy holds up, there'll be another 300 and 400 and 500. So there is a funding mechanism for some of this.
Do we have an estimated cost on just the urban loop?
No. It's very complex because there's so many different, there's so many different solutions to get that 13 miles, because you can put sharrows in some area, which is relatively economical. Some places you're going to have to push the curb line back, some places you may be able to put bike lanes in there. It's going to be such a combination until we get more detail on that, it couldn't really give you a cost estimate.
Big and small, sort of, highway acquisition.
Yeah.
Mayor, we did include cost estimates on the 12 priority projects, so there are cost estimates in the plan for those, at least the segments of their.
And many of them fall along the hub loop, so.
I have a question. I had the opportunity to live in Holland for a couple of years, and they're a very bike pedestrian-centric country.
Right.
And there's a distinct difference in law enforcement mentality towards law enforcement when it comes to pedestrian and bicycle traffic versus motor vehicle traffic.
That's right.
The towns and the cities that you're seeing be successful, are you seeing that difference in the mentality and how, how does that happen? Does law enforcement have a seat at the table in this plan?
Yes, in fact, who was it represented, the police department? So we did have representation. And that's a great point, because Heather and I both live in a town where people know you need to drive what the speed limit is, or there will be a consequence. And if people don't know that, then that sign means almost nothing. Now, I mean, that's easier said than done, because there's lots of things that police need to spend their time on, but that is part of the equation. NC DOT has got a great program called the Watch For Me Program, which is about safety and education of motorists and people walking and biking, and a lot of it is done in conjunction with law enforcement.
And along with that, we also have a bike league, we already have places on bicycles anyway. So that would be incorporated, I'm sure, in part of the legislation concept as well.
Do you see vigorous enforcement of distracted driving laws?
Do we see it?
Yes. In the communities that are being successful with this, that's, I mean, that's at the top of my mind, people, you know, I mean, you can go out now and see people on their phone, and when you combine bicycles and pedestrians and cars with distracted drivers, that's a recipe for disaster.
I do think, I mean, you look at some of our neighboring states, like South Carolina, has more aggressive, at the state level, more aggressive distracted driving laws on the books. I do think we are going to need some help from the state legislature for that, but I do think there's a role for the local law enforcement as well.
Thank you.
I actually observed a person texting while biking.
Yes, it happens.
Any other questions? Well, I know, I hear all the time from our community how excited they are to see what we've already done, and of course, those that have attended these meetings are excited for the future. So we're looking forward to moving through this, and we appreciate you, John, Heather, and everybody working on this, the folks that are here, those that aren't here, that worked on the committee, the staff. I think this is a need, something that's needed, and that the community will be real proud of once we can, once we can get it up and running. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody else have anything?
Take action to, to.
If you want to take action and approve the plan or adopt the plan tonight.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve this bicycle pedestrian plan that was just presented to move ahead as needed.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Jill, are you, okay, Jill's in house, so it's unanimous. All right, any opposed? Aye. It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, folks, we'll adjourn until 7 o'clock. At 7 o'clock, we'll resume and have our regular city council meeting. Thank you for being here.
What is this meeting about? Just voting.
Okay, motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.